Roll books. Here.
Here?
Here.
All right. And this is your show because you're gonna...
Can I ask a question before you start your show? So I've been reading in the newspaper and I'm just wondering whether or not you all weighed in or had any conversations with, you know, the builders that are saying, hey, give us blanket, you know, approval and so forth. Any conversation from you all and does, or from the board or township weighing in on that story? Yeah. Yes, okay. 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 Yeah?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that there was a lot of pushback, but thank you for giving us an update in Orange Township's perspective, okay?
I think my, I thought it hurt the door.
All right, so we're kind of continuing our discussion on the draft zoning code. So this time I think we're going to try to tackle some of the uses and the various districts that we have. Eric, do you mind clicking over to the zoning map, the proposed zoning map?
Sure.
This is the first immediate step.
So as a reminder, we're kind of rolling a lot of the currently existing districts into these new zones. And so, you know, we tried, there's a few new zones, but for the most part we tried to line up what is existing and what would be new zones. So, you know, we're not talking about parcels that would be going from residential to commercial or commercial to industrial. We're really trying to line them up and have, you know, planned commercial districts roll into the new commercial zone, which is kind of what we want to talk about this evening. So I think probably the easiest way to do this, it's a little bit difficult. It's not super user-friendly in the text itself, but on the, in the zoning text, the draft zoning text that you all got, I believe it's page 165, I think I said in my email, which I'll check it on. 165 is the full use table. And so that's where we have everything, where you can see every use that we have outlined and which zone it's either permitted in, not permitted in, or it's a conditionally permitted use. As a reminder, conditional uses, you know, it may be appropriate for that location but requires some additional review, which is done by the Board of Zoning Appeals. So the BZA would have to approve any use that is marked as conditional. So I think the, probably the easiest way to do this is I put together an Excel sheet, just kind of pulling everything out of the text so that it all fits on one screen. So I think the easiest way to do this is to kind of do it by zone. So we'll start with Commercial Corridor, which is the first column on the left, and kind of just work our way down.
And could you, could you correspond, put the other map back up and just point out the Commercial Corridor?
Yeah, yeah. So Eric can flip it back. So Commercial Corridor is the red.
Okay.
So we're talking mostly along the 23 corridor, some other random parcels as well, but mostly we're talking about the just traditional commercial zone primarily along 23.
Again, I just have one quick question. You see the city of Columbus?
Yeah.
The city of Westville?
Yep.
Those two little red areas, is that? Orange?
Yes, it is. So basically anything that has a color is Orange Township. And so actually...
Further right.
Yeah.
Keep going? Go down? Keep going, see those two red, those three red pieces right there? That, those two, and the one south of that?
Yeah. So, and actually, so one of those is actually the distillery.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
One of those is over there. I don't, the other one might be a take care, I believe. Honestly, I don't deal with those very often, but they're just kind of...
Yeah, they're really take care, they're home-based.
Yeah. Then there's just some, some strange islands over there where it's, it's, Westerville, can't you just take these off our hands?
Exactly.
I mean, I'm wondering how they're trying to get right into the story.
Yeah, it makes no sense, you know, but why it happens?
It doesn't.
Yeah, but...
But we have no control.
No control, right.
So yeah, for the most part, Commercial Corridor is located along US 23. All right, so Eric, if you'll mind flipping back to the table. So Commercial Corridor, I'm not going to go through every use necessarily, but I'm just, you know, I think we can kind of scroll down. Eric, if you, you might be able to zoom in a little bit, just so we can look at the columns a little bit easier.
Robin, that's adult entertainment, that's label, that's conditional?
Yep.
Is that what we had before with that panel?
Essentially, yes. So there are the city planning term that we use, I guess, as sexually-oriented businesses. In this, we have it labeled as adult entertainment. Essentially, the case law behind this history is that you're not allowed to say that it can't go anywhere. You can't just tell a type of business, you can't be in our township at all. But we can make it, we can have enough standards that it would make it very, very, very difficult in practice for them to actually be able to locate.
From business concern, you may say, hey, this may not work.
Right, yeah.
And that for those medical marijuana dispensaries would fall as far as making it hard to come into our district?
Correct. And so actually marijuana is a different conversation. It's one, I mean, because it's so recent, we haven't added it to this table yet, but we will. And I will tell you, and again, this is separate, the direction that I'm getting from the Board of Trustees currently is that they want marijuana establishments to be legal in Orange Township.
Interesting.
That is correct.
I was in Denver last year, and Denver is kind of relegated to what we've done for adult entertainment.
Yeah.
I, I'm not sure why you would want to move those out.
I appreciate that input. There, there may be an amendment that is coming shortly. I will have more information on that tomorrow, that the trustees may want you all as a commission to look at that even sooner than this.
And they're like all over in some neighborhoods, but I don't really think they should be in Columbus. They're just...
What is that?
The medical marijuana business.
Yeah, okay. I mean, it depends on... If they're the Commercial Corridor and they're maintaining there and having, meet the standard expectations, not just the, I mean, I've seen some that are high-quality standard, look really, really nice. I've seen some others that I'm like, really?
Yeah.
Okay. I just think it's really about making sure that the standards around it are high-quality, because that is a very, it's not a cheap business to get, well, it's looking, but it's not a cheap business to get into.
It's not.
You have to put up, I mean, I'm looking to, you have to put about $2 million into the thing, I mean, even just the licenses every six months renewals, it's just crazy. So it's gonna happen to somebody who has some...
Yeah, but to me, it doesn't matter. Call that, I don't care. It takes $10 billion to open one, makes no difference. All those things like adult entertainment, it's not what to do for the quality of that neighborhood if it happens to sit there. You know, it doesn't add anything, it has, the best it can be is neutral, the very best it can be is neutral, but much more likely to be on the negative side. That's why to me it always still belongs in the adult entertainment. You can't take it out. Now, could that change another 10, 20 years? Yeah, of course it could, but today I think you need to retreat as to what it's going to do for the quality of the area and your neighborhood and etc.
Yeah, I was, I just, I mean, I don't know if, I wasn't talking about adult entertainment incident, I was talking about the...
Medical one.
Medical, medical marijuana.
Exactly, so much. I'm saying, I'm saying it's the same.
Oh, okay.
To me, it's the same. It has the same effect on the neighborhood. You know, that marijuana can say anything it wants. To me, it's the same, has same effect on the quality of what that neighborhood.
Until I need it for medicine purposes.
And that's, and that's going to be unlikely. And I almost still think that for the use of most of that, as far as medical purposes, is extremely limited to questionable. So I don't regard it very high.
I understand. I'd be interested in, in maybe understanding also, I'm not opposed to, but if the board has particular reasons why they believe it adds some value here, if not more than tax-based, or I'd like to see what the story is.
So, you know, and I don't want to get hung up on that issue tonight.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there's, there's, we'll have more discussion on that later, mostly. All right, so looking at this, so we kind of, in these first two sections, accessory uses, home-based business, I mean, in theory, there's no homes in the Commercial Corridor, but we kind of included that as a permitted use anyway. If it was a business, it should be able to go in commercial. The rest of the ones in one are fairly self-explanatory. In two, so heavy industrial, we had that discussion last time.
Yeah.
It's not permitted. We do have advanced manufacturing is permitted.
Now, just real quick on the heavy industrial, we were going to get a better definition of clarification of that.
Yeah, and so this is another thing that's going to be key to looking at these uses. So our current code is a little lacking on definitions, but one thing that I do really like about this proposed zoning code is that we have really tight definitions of what everything is. So if you have questions about, you know, what is this definition, it is in the appendix, or just ask me, I'll have to look it up because I don't have a memorized group. We'll get there. So again, heavy industrial is just not permitted in the Commercial Corridor. Light industrial is permitted, as is advanced manufacturing. So I can go ahead and read the definition of advanced manufacturing, the use of innovative technologies to improve products or processes. These technologies include control systems, custom manufacturing, hyper-sugar technologies, sustainability technologies, high-performance computing, and advanced robotics. So I think there's some question as to whether that could be classified as more of an industrial use, but we do have it for now marked as permitted in the Commercial Corridor. Light industrial similarly is permitted by right. Warehousing and logistics is a conditionally use. Just warehouses are, can be kind of a touchy topic. It's something that honestly, we don't, in the two years that I've been here, I haven't gotten a lot of requests for warehousing here. In general, just the land price is high enough, but I don't think it...
We're not a good location.
Right, yeah. Even though 23 is a major corridor, the land prices are too high.
Too much traffic.
Yeah.
You know, it's too much traffic for the, for moving trucks in and out.
Yeah.
I don't think they're gonna be interested.
Even if your distribution is just all going north, you're still gonna do it, that challenge up in there.
And there are, you know, we're certainly aware that there can be conflicts with, you know, those kind of warehousing uses and residences that are nearby. So we have it as conditionally permitted. So if a warehousing did want to come, then in theory, they could request the, the use be permitted, but it might be a tough sell.
It would be.
Any discussion or questions on those?
Community garden, I find that to be interesting. I guess it's a board war, I don't know.
I agree. It was one of those, we looked at it and thought, you know, if somebody has, if somebody wants to do a community garden there?
Yeah, there's no pain in the...
Yeah, I don't, it didn't seem to hurt it to include it. In reality, it will never happen.
Not gonna happen.
But if somebody did want to do it, they could do it.
They kicked it out at its farm.
Right, yeah.
Last year, they kicked it out.
All right, so let's move on to three, which is commercial uses. So again, this is kind of the bread and butter of this district. Again, adult entertainment is a conditionally use and it has additional restrictions. So that's why you see Section 3.10, where we have additional requirements laid out for it there. A lot of these are retail. We do have beverage distribution, beverage brewing and distilling, beverage production as conditionally permitted uses. Again, we don't have a lot of requests for those types of uses, so we have it as conditional.
When we think of conditional in that respect, what is, is it just if someone wants to live, it's an application, or is it...
Right, so it's, you know, it's trying to build in some flexibility, both for private owners and for businesses. Just that if it's, if it's marked as commercial and it's in kind of a tucked-away corner, maybe it wouldn't go there.
All three of those would have to be a small, to be even be considered, because any, any one of those could almost be heavy industry for what you typically see. Not just a distribution, but anything with production or distilling.
It's, so I guess beverage, brewing, distilling, and I see the non-alcoholic, and I see the distribution. What if there was a wine kind of production there, is that?
So we, we don't for wine, but they're a little farther down. We do have a microbrewery or micro-distillery category, which would be separate from the larger scale. So I think we differentiate that by the number of gallons that they produce annually. Let me look at that definition.
I'm just wondering if, you know, you think from the, and I don't know how much property is developed anywhere in this city quarter, but someone wanted to build a wine, blah, blah, blah. We grow some grapes, someone would bring me an Irish order, come in and say, we sell bottles.
Yeah, I mean, I think because they wouldn't be making the wine on the site, that it, that would just be retail essentially.
Yeah, well, my thought is that they would make it on the site.
Oh, okay. So I think we would, we would probably...
Is that just agriculture?
It would, yeah, it would probably depend. I would probably classify it, even though it's wine, as microbrewery or micro-distillery.
Yeah.
So the definition there is an establishment where alcoholic beverages are manufactured and where such beverages may be consumed on premises.
I think you technically brew wine is like how it would fall under a definition.
Yeah, interesting. You technically what?
Like you brew wine. It's not distilled, like, like hard alcohol. So I think that's, it falls in the same category as breweries, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, and I guess, maybe I, maybe I don't know what the definition of brewing is, but I always think of wine as, you know, being cased.
Yeah.
And allowing it to ferment.
Yeah.
Go forward. Is that brewing?
I think so. I think it's not that different.
Some reason brewing always like...
Beer.
I always think brewing of putting some heat on it or something. But, yeah, I got you. Okay, no worries.
And 20,000 barrels per year or less is where we have a cutoff for micro, microbrewing.
I think if you think about it, say, you think about it in terms of size.
Yeah.
Okay, because, because, you know, what this is designed to do, it looks to me, is to limit, if we're going to be conditional, limit its size, you know? We're not going to talk about, and fit with the area based on size, I guess where it goes.
So yeah, if the, so the distillery that you all approved last year, that would be located in this zone, it would be permitted because they're going to do under 20,000 per year there. But if Budweiser came in, then it would be a different story.
Okay.
One, so this is a, this will be another touchy topic. We do have car washes as permitted by right. I know that has been a difficult subject for residents in the past. Do you all have any thoughts or comments on car washes being permitted here?
Well, I think we, you know, for what it's worth, the limitation, well, the market dictates, the demand for such. And I mean, we have already...
You gotta add that other.
Yeah, so... You know, if there's such a thing as when you get to X number, you, maybe the next...
Not, not generally.
Yeah.
That, that'd be purely up to you and your personal opinion as to what you decide to do if you were, because others would say, hey, if this size come in here, they've already done their homework.
Right.
And I've already decided this is a good business venture enough to invest our money and there's enough people to support it. So...
Yeah.
So, but yeah, you personally could say, no, I don't personally want it and vote against it.
I, I think it should be permitted. I just want to know if I got too many, because what I hear often here is, is the rules say they can do it, they submitted great application, I have no other choice but to say, although I don't necessarily subscribe to that, but that's what I hear.
Yeah. So I, I think part of how we can control that too is through our comprehensive land use plan, where that's where you can outline a little bit more of the wants and needs of the community.
Yeah.
Rather than kind of the more black and white zoning.
Yeah. Without, without the applicant causing additional issues from a legal perspective saying, I met all the requirements.
Right.
Why would you tell me that cannot, you know? And that's what it's already its own for on the property, you know, that...
Yeah. And that is another, you know, it, the, just the system of how we decide what will go where will change because it won't be per property as much. It won't be, you know, you all going through a planned district and deciding to approve this one use. It'd be, you know...
It hasn't even been decided? After 23 corridor, no, no car-based businesses?
Well, and that is another factor that, you know, we have kind of decided that auto-oriented uses cannot go into the overlay district because that's kind of an expedited, you know, zone.
Right, so, right, so there, there was the, that was the place they cut it out because they got in trouble with sheeps.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so you decided, okay, we don't want any of those. I disagree with that personally, but that wasn't my issue. That's somebody else's. So, so, but if it's in the 23 corridor and it's approved, you're correct. You don't really have a choice.
Right.
But right now, the automotive-based things are out of, out of the corridor.
Yeah, so, and as long as we can rest upon that.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm okay. And if we decide, let me make sure I understand this. If, if we, even though it's out of that corridor, but we decide, you know what, we can't use one more, and we say, yeah, the board says, yeah, can that still go there?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think that's...
But it would be unlikely.
It would.
It would be unlikely. 23 corridor, I said, no, a lot of businesses. It's unlikely somebody's gonna show up here and say, no, I only want a car wash.
I'm just saying the unicorn that may come and he come with a, with a thing that just begazes them.
Yeah, and, and I do want to clarify, so the, the auto-oriented uses are prohibited from using the overlay district, but they can still go in in the underlying zoning. So they can be permitted in the Commercial Corridor base district.
No worries.
All right. Moving on down, things are mostly standard. We did, both are permitted in this zone, but we did delineate between grocery stores with size once again. So we have small grocery store and then large grocery store, and that's determined by square footage. Overnight lodging, bed and breakfast boutique hotel, hotel or motel would all be permitted.
Can I say something else?
Yeah, Steve, do you mind?
Yeah.
Give your name and address.
Hey, guys, I'm Steve Todzki. 1353 Royal Drive over in Dos Jopres Creek. I'm on the zoning appeals as an alternate. I also own and teach schools as facilities. I'm kind of one of the most responsible for all the buildings we're going and ask for. I do extended stay hotel projects for a living. Like, that's the contract I try to build all over the country. So I have a really fine ear for it, especially remember Ohio. There's one kind of like gotcha that we give and go through within Ohio. It's around the word transient. And essentially, like, what is defined as transient for extended stay or what is not? I'm just like, what I've kind of learned is the best way to safeguard your own township to have like the best control in the matter is to essentially like make sure you're defining the word transient, otherwise it's up to whoever wants to define it. Do you know if we already did that, Robin?
I believe we do, but let me check.
And if we don't, the best thing is to just defer to the state of Ohio. Or just like doing that little switch-up allows like a lot more flexibility with...
What, what, how long is state Ohio's transient story? How many days?
It's complicated, but there is a application, it's called the T270 application. Essentially, what it means is up to 40% of your rooms can have kitchenettes.
Okay.
And that's like a whole nother complicated situation. What, what it allows for is like a dual-brand hotel to come in and like put, you know, a true on one side and a wood spring suite on the other or whatever. But it ultimately keeps it not our one. Yeah, I don't know if that makes sense, but like what we're trying to do is like prevent these rooms from eventually becoming...
Long-term.
Homie, yeah. And so like being able to pull half of them apart, you know, it keeps the product transient essentially. Like, that's long-term, very helpful for township to spend.
There's some of them where some of the shelters, when they run out, like Family Promise in Delaware, and they stick some of their residents in...
Yeah, so I actually, I help out with the community shelter board a lot, just because they're so, there's, like, the product's so much the same, but yeah, like community shelter often will house people, like, you know, except in same product, just as they're dealing with like winter homes, which is a super...
No, 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 yeah, I see, yeah.
Yeah. Ultimately, it's like you said, the, the approach is super empowering to just put someone in a hotel, like, rather than like an emergency shelter downtown Columbus where they spend all their executive functioning just trying to follow the rules.
Right.
Being able to like house them in a hotel where they just have the key, now they can call their sister to, you know, get a job, whatever. It's, their data says it's actually a lot more beneficial. Yeah, it's hard to justify just like looking at what you're giving them, but...
All right, so we do our definition of overnight lodging hotel or motel. Any structure consisting of one or more buildings containing any combination of more than five guest rooms that meet the requirements for transient sleeping rooms for a stay of 30 days or less, or extended stay temporary residence dwelling units for a minimum stay of more than 30 days, where all rooms, units are accessed from the interior hallway or is having features of such sleeping rooms and dwelling units within the same room. And such structure is specifically constructed, kept used, maintained, advertised, and held out to the public to be considered transient sleeping accommodations where temporary residence is offered for paid persons, but such structure does not otherwise meet the definition of bed, breakfast, et cetera, et cetera. I'll stop there. Does, does not include agricultural labor camps, apartment houses, apartments, or other similar places of permanent personal residence, lodging houses, rooming houses, or hospital or college dormitories. While a hotel may include extended stay temporary residence dwelling units for a minimum stay of more than 30 days, a transient hotel shall only include transient sleeping rooms for a day, a stay of 30 days or less.
Do you have transient under the definitions of, that's like that's where you're gonna get caught?
Um, no, I mean, we can look at that. So it, I believe it would kind of refer to the ORC, but we would probably look to reference that specifically. So thank you for that.
Yeah.
All right, moving back to the table. Recreational vehicles sales and services are conditionally permitted. Retail is all permitted. Retail is all permitted. We do have standalone drive through as, uh, permitted, um, so things like the Starbucks where they don't have a, a dining component, those would be permitted. Or a, a bank where they don't have a, you know, an indoor section, those would be permitted. Vehicle repair for light vehicles would be conditionally permitted, vehicle sales and service would be conditionally permitted. Do we have any comments or want to talk about anything for kind of that whole commercial section?
I think I'm good with, uh. What's a, a short term rental story there versus that hotel transient story, what's the difference?
Short, short, short term rental and we, we might wanna take that out of commercial corridor entirely because that's, uh, short term rental is specifically for residences, so that's an Airbnb.
Yeah, 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 I see that.
Okay, thank you. Here, if you don't mind scrolling down, there's just a, a few more in this, we have the kind of congregational uses, uh, all permitted there, so, uh. Community center, event center, library, uh, religious assembly, theater would all be permitted, I, to me, that all makes sense. Daycare would be permitted, uh, schools would be permitted. Uh, we do have, uh, health uses that would be permitted, clinics, um, the one that is not permitted is drug, alcohol or psychiatric treatment center.
Wow, we don't have that anywhere in either.
That, yeah, that is an interesting point, um, we may want to look at that, uh, we'll have legal look at that.
I thought that facility.
It's been on twenty-one, on twenty-three.
What, what, what's, what's the kind of facility, is that, that we approved that's going right here or something?
There was the memory care.
Yeah, the memory care.
So that would fall under assisted living.
Okay, okay.
Cause there have been residential memory care, yeah.
Cause, uh, yeah, so even like a psychiatric treatment center. Help me work through this, but if someone has a, if someone is a psychotic patient, they want to open a.
Practice.
A practice in the commercial space.
So I think that would be classified as the clinic.
Okay.
Where it's, it's outpatient.
Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me those three things are, are, are not a, potentially fall under the definition of clinic all the time. If they, they, do they get, do they get listed and those as separate things?
Let me look at my handy definitions.
Yeah, it, it, it seems to me all that kind of falls under the clinic definition, but, but you know, I guess.
Psychiatric treatments are inpatient and like Mary's, was it Mary Haven, Mary name?
Mary Haven.
Yeah.
I don't know of any other facilities in Columbus area quite like that one, but.
Yes. So I, I think the, the key distinction between clinic and then those facilities is that clinic is outpatient, although they, they do not.
Yeah, and they would be inpatient, yeah.
Okay, okay, right, that's right. I made sure.
Public uses would all be permitted, um, so government buildings, cemeteries, uh, parks, uh, public parking, uh, public utilities. Recreational would all be permitted, uh, commercial recreation indoor or outdoor. Assisted living, senior, independent living, uh, skilled care would all be permitted. And that's really it for the commercial board. Do you think that we missed anything, any red flags?
Um, go, go up just from a housing perspective, uh, just, yeah, residential uses. Yeah, I'm just wondering in the idea of having, uh. When, when I think of housing, uh, the need for housing and that sort of thing going and continue to grow strong multifamily housing. You know, there's always a challenge in putting it in neighborhoods.
Yeah.
But maybe in the. Corridor, on the, in the commercial space, maybe that is something that could. Cause affordable housing, not only affordable housing, just housing in general, it's wanting to be, continue to grow here. And my thought is if the, to get the least amount of challenge, so to speak, in the communities. Maybe allowing it to be placed somewhere on the, on the corridor less you think that, that it's gonna be every six foot, somebody's gonna say, hey, let's put up a two hundred unit.
Well, that's, so I think the, um, the, the mechanism for somebody to, to do that would, uh, be a rezoning. Um, and where, with this process, I mean, at least to this point, we've decided, you know, if, again, if. We're keeping commercial properties commercial, but if somebody wants to come in and put apartments on twenty-three, which I, you know, I think makes sense for a lot of the reasons that you just said. That that's when they would come in, apply to rezone to the multifamily zone or, uh, community living zone, uh, and then this board would hear that request, um, like any other.
I guess I, I guess I am a little curious why it, it, it wasn't either conditional use, cause we, we just talked about, I'm sure you. And what, we just talked about one of those that was up there by the fire station, I don't remember how many units it was.
Yeah. Well, again, it's, you know, it's kind of stretching the definition of what, um, a commercial zoning is, and so. If somebody wants to come in and, and do a, a big multifamily project, the, the land use plan can also guide them in that. Uh, but it would be, uh, directing them to the appropriate district for what their project is, so instead of trying to, um. Bend and Franken, cause we do that now, we kind of Frankenstein like our, our plan, commercial districts to have residential, so. Trying to kind of get rid of that practice and say, alright, just change your district to the multifamily district.
Yeah, but, but where is that, where is that, go back with the map?
Oh, we're twenty-three, where would it fall on twenty?
No, no, I'm, I'm looking for the multifamily, uh, the, what do you call it?
So, community living is.
Community.
What color is it?
It's C L.
The greenish color.
It's C L, which is not C I. Yeah, so it's actually kind of a beige, it's, it's a little difficult to, to see it.
So they're kind of not really pulling twenty.
Yeah, so they're, they're all tucked into.
Neighborhood.
Neighborhoods and neighborhoods are gonna say, oh, zippa zippa no, right, and. Because of that, or. You know, everybody would say, hey, I don't want it in my neighborhood.
Right.
But if I could, so, I mean, I understand you're saying, well, they have to come in and do the, whatever, I'm just wondering, is it, is there some value in saying? We could see a. Complex going here because we think it brings a value, but where that here is, can we still carve that out in this story that's one question. Versus them coming in, in other words, going back to your. Uh, what was it called, um, it kind of lays out what our.
The, the land use plan.
The land use plan, uh. Cause here we have a bunch of that from all the other ones.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And how can we show our.
If, if, Rob, is this just a matter of definitions with respect to, uh, uh, commercial versus residential? Would, if an apartment building is either a, is that a commercial or is that a residential?
It would be residential.
Yeah, and so, so this is, this is really in, in, in about definitions in some respect, right?
In essence, yes.
Because, because I think about this one, we, I, we just talked about, which I'm sure you enlightened you to, which I think is probably a perfect use for that. Piece of property and that's a, yeah, and it's a residential and businesses were in it and. But yeah, but it would fall into that with respect to a six plus residential.
Where is that located?
Well, the thing we just talked about was a preliminary thing last week, but it's right there, that piece of property right there, kind of in front of the fire station.
Yeah, so we, um, to Dennis's point, we do have some multifamily developers that are interested in, in various parcels on twenty-three. So those are, may or may not come to you in the next.
Right, I mean, I agree, but, but again, it's about our definition, cause that's, here this is commercial, but these people wanna do this and, alright.
They could find commercial.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, yeah, that's, that's just. Define, define, commercial, you have to go to the commercial side and get along from the, if it's more than forty years story, yeah.
But yeah, somebody came in like, these folks, we, it's absolutely permitted, we'll talk to you and.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I just didn't, I don't figure out somehow with me either. That my, there's two concerns, first concern is, yes, I want some kind of multifamily housing along the corridor. But the second concern is you open it up, developers will be adhered to applications potentially, right, over every six square foot that's available.
I guarantee you, that, that one they built just in Columbus, just south of us, that's in Columbus, you know, just on twenty-three.
Yeah, by the car dealership, yeah.
That thing sold out, sold in just a short time.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, so, yeah, and you know, whenever somebody signed the bill, it would be, they, they, they know, they, they can sell them.
You got the big one going up by, um, like Shanahan or whatever that street, is that Shanahan twenty-three?
That's Moll Cox.
And that one's pretty big and it's probably gonna go, but I mean.
Yeah, so I, I guess my question is.
But it's, it doesn't address if, uh, affordable, but you can afford, but I mean, I don't. Yeah, yeah, affordable is not a personal afford, so they're not gonna put in, um, long time housing tax credits up here, you got the, the apartment that went in over by the. Walmart or something off of, what's it called, Julie's Orchard.
No, yeah, Julie's Orchard.
Julie's Orchard, but I don't see any of those going anywhere up on twenty-three.
Did, did you leave it out just because of the definition and decided, I'm, I'm almost thinking you make that conditional.
So I, I guess here's.
You've got, I'm, I'm interested in the thinking about why that was left out.
Yeah, so.
Thought process.
Well, it's left out because we're really trying to separate.
Yeah, we're trying to identify.
Yeah, so we have a commercial district, we do have a mixed use district, and then we have a multifamily district.
Okay.
You know, if you want to change the nature of what can go on twenty-three, that's fine, but what, I think what we don't want to do is.
Make some hodgepodge.
Right, yeah, because that's.
I get you.
Yeah, the, the standards for the multifamily district are designed with multifamily in mind, and the standards for the commercial district are designed with commercial uses in mind.
Yeah, my, 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 my concern though is if someone comes and says, hey, let me ask you for rezoning of this area. We're gonna say, well, that one was originally wanted to do, so we're not gonna, that's mine.
Yeah, and I, I think that is a valid concern, um, but again, this commission would have input on that, the board of trustees would have input on that. And, uh, I mean, our goal is to redo our land use plan after we approve this new zoning, and so, you know, that would be the, the aspiration, all we want this to go here. Kind of conversation.
I mean, we're willing to put assisted living facility, we're willing to put a senior independent living facility in that same. That could be, you know, a hundred, a hundred units or so, I mean, those, those went over pretty quickly, I'm just. Yeah, so, anyhow.
You have a different type of audience and foot traffic and to those buildings as well, because with the senior independent living facilities. They are gonna have the seniors and not a lot of folks, sometimes you think of multifamily apartment buildings, I would say that's always had to be true. It could be a different type of traffic.
It, it, you know.
Even at supportive housing, if I think about supportive housing, some of it's for reentry population, some of it's for disabled, some of it's for very low income, and that's a whole different.
You know, I was gonna say, I mean, I personally like to see some affordable housing.
Yeah.
Here, specifically, um, low income housing tax credit, I mean, which is a substantial, you gotta make a minimum. So it's, it's not like income payers say, hey, I'm, I'm making nothing, I'm, you know, very, very low income. Um, you know, even for a family of four, even just for a single person, you gotta make a, a decent amount of money in order to stay there. And the developer uses usually are the one who gets tax credit banks and, and large corporation to get the, get the credits for it. Um, it requires certain standards and that sort of thing, um, but I, you know, that's something I would like to see. Supported here in some way, shape or fashion.
Yeah, no, I agree.
And to me, the twenty-three corridor would be a, yeah, be a developer come along. I mean, I really wish this was in Columbus, Columbus, I call the housing authority with. Right price, right property, they probably already lost property by now, but right price, right property would develop a really nice product there that, that, uh. Would be low income housing tax credit, which, and I think, uh, State of Ohio is, uh, didn't the governor push for affordable housing, uh, to put more money in affordable housing?
There has been a discussion about that.
Yeah, how does that impact, I mean, any, I guess it's all about the developers and they're gonna be, well, that's the reason they're telling you right now. We wanna run over and just do what we wanna do as far as development in various areas, so.
And they go for our schools again, they already wanna build another high school because of the population growth, and they're going to attack us, we just talked about this, we walked in.
Yeah, well, exactly, the, the, the whole tax base needs to be way too high for, for anything talking about low income housing. The, the orange township, I don't know, I just don't see any way, because of all the money that's required to function in all this, that's other than that.
Yeah.
I mean, I just think about.
Fair market wins, the, the government say they can.
Well, the government has to, have to subsidize.
Of course, of course, that's what made that's part of the low income housing tax credit component, the tax credits themselves, subsidy, I mean, that's why the big.
For the businesses, the disadvantage is for the families that move in because they never prepare them in that compliance period end that they.
Yeah, fifteen years later, yeah.
And they say, oh, yeah, you should have had your credit, gotta get a loan for the house.
Yeah, fifteen years later, but anyhow, I, that's something I, I think we ought to have a session and chew on.
Yeah, no, and I.
See how we can, I, I'm not saying flood the place, I mean, everybody has concerns about that, but I am saying, uh, I think it's critical. Uh, as a community, I don't, I'm gonna use this word softly because I don't want it to sound the way I want it, the way it may be taken. Uh, not to quote unquote do our part, but the perspective is, uh, giving people choice to live in our community and get to know us, and we get to know them. And bring the necessary diversity to, you know, to.
Amy Clay does organizations on a lot of that right now, Amy Clayman, she's got more, she's been on the news with governor, everybody has recognized her, I can't even name of it now. But she has moved families into, um, they're working and they have certain criteria and they cook their mentors, they move their children, they feel, she feels that if you. Get a quality education, that's your step up out of poverty, which is.
So if, 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 I don't know how we do that, but if you can put that on a topic of discussion for us to come back and explore this more, I really would like to do that.
Yeah, we can look at that, and thank you for, for bringing it up, I mean, in general, uh, with this draft code, it's really, it's designed to be pro housing. Uh, and designed to be pro flexibility, I think the, um, where it gets tricky is where you put it.
Where, yeah.
So I, you know, I think in a way, this, you know, this discussion regarding districts and zones, I know we have the, the map and the, the use table upside by side, but in a way, they're slightly different.
Yeah.
Discussions.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But, but yes, I, I understand your point, Les, and I, I agree with you.
Thank you.
Hot families flourish. Chief families, Houston, I believe, partnership.
Alright, so I th- I think we'll kind of, um, we'll wrap that on the commercial corridor. Alright, so I th- I think we'll kind of, um, we'll wrap that on the commercial corridor, um, I, I think, uh, we can probably go for another half an hour if that works for, for more, if we go to lead. Um, so a few other things that I wanna touch on, um, so in terms of new zones, uh, the campus institutional zone would be new. Um, we really, it's kind of designed for the, um, public or semi-public uses that exist already, so schools, churches, um, certain utilities might fall into the campus institutional, uh, we do have some, uh, uh, some commercial uses permitted in there, Eric, if you don't mind scrolling down a little bit, please. Um, just thinking, you know, if, uh.
Can you show us where that, where the campus, let's call it campus.
Campus institutional.
Yeah, where is that on the, on your map?
It's going to be hard to see because there's not going to be a lot, so, so it's actually, it's blue.
Blue, okay, you got some spaces, there's some empty spaces there.
Yeah, and then I think I am seeing some that might need to be, this, and again, this zoning map is not the, the final, final.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, a lot of these are going to be churches, um, churches and utilities, so like Delco's big property that's just a little north of where it's mounted is there, that big, yeah, big blue right in the middle, that's, uh, Delco's water field, that's, um, zone campus institutional. But in general, uh, you know, churches, schools, those are gonna be the big ones that fall into this zone. We do have some limited commercial uses that would be permitted here if, uh, you know, we, uh, we kind of felt comfortable doing that because we don't see, uh, a lot of the ownership changing from those public semi-public entities to commercial entities, but if, um, you know, a church wanted to have a small cafe or something on site, then they would be able to do that.
It, it, just real quick on the surface, based on your years of experience and having conversations with various, um, it may, it's already your plan. What do, what do you think we're missing, the biggest thing that you think Orange Township is missing from a development perspective or that you wish would come? I'm just curious.
I mean, it, it's difficult, so I, I think the, it's not always the, the uses that are mismatched, but in a way, it's the type of, um, the type of establishment, so I, I think a lot of the tension is, uh, you know, you have seventy thousand cars that go up and down US twenty-three.
Yeah.
And so that's why we have a lot of gas stations, car washes, or, you know, all, you know, those uses that, uh, are really want to get people in and out.
Big closure, yeah.
And so, you know, I think, and so we have all of that available commercial ground that is very much in demand because those businesses know that they can crank out customers like that. Where we have the mismatch is, um, you know, businesses that kind of are more geared towards the residents that live in the township, so, I mean, things like cafes, high-end restaurants, you know, uh, more local retail, uh, those kind of more, um, I, I, you know, I don't wanna, I don't mean high quality necessarily, but things that just, you know, serve people who live here rather than people passing through.
Yeah, yeah.
More community versus corporate.
Right, yeah, uh, so I, I think that's, and, and that's, it's very difficult to tackle that from a selling perspective. Uh, it's, there's market forces outside of, uh, you know, your control, my control, anybody's control that, that dictate that, but that is, I, I think, one of where, not that we can do better necessarily, but where there's room for improvement.
That's why we have the Evans Farm.
Right, and, and that is part of the goal of, of Evans Farm, um, and, uh, you know, I think it's good that we have that commercial that's a little bit off the twenty-three corridor, uh, as well.
Yeah.
That does help with that.
Well, if I put my two cents in, which I've been a advocate for this for years, it's, we're thirty thousand people, we don't have a hotel, we're Orange Township. I think that's gonna oversight.
Free drug down.
And a big miss.
Yeah.
Get your straight tip of a bucket, I guess, too.
You think I get, get up to the, to Columbus, there's some smaller ones there, could, could fit here.
Does Township have any incentives for various businesses, I mean?
Uh, um, we have some, uh, it's generally not on the scale of like a local business, uh, because a lot of what it is, is, uh, we can do property tax abatements, we can do TIFs, which are, uh, tax increment financing, but a lot of that has to deal with the land because we deal with, we collect property tax, and that's kind of the one lever that we have. Uh, Delaware County does have, uh, more kind of broad incentives for smaller local businesses, um, so we can, we work with the county and try to, you know, if somebody calls my office and says, hey, I'm looking to start a business, or, you know, I have a small business that I'd like to make bigger, uh, what resources do you have for me, I would direct them to Delaware County Economic Development. Alright, uh, so moving on, uh, community living zone would basically be, uh, multifamily, um, so it's, it's primarily, uh, the, the residential uses. I don't know that we need to go down it, uh, too much in detail, uh, I mean, if you have other thoughts, then, um, I'm, I'm open to them, uh, but it's, that one's fairly self-explanatory. I guess I, I will, I'll jump over, um, so this is the, actually, the third column from the right is the neighborhood zone, I wanna touch on this one while we still have, uh, some time left, because this will generate some discussion, I think. So the neighborhood zone would be single-family, um, and, uh, you know, so it's, it's a, a big chunk of the township would be the, the neighborhood zone.
Correct.
So, uh, again, and this goes back to our, um, you know, encouraging housing and encouraging different types of housing, um, in the neighborhood zone. So Eric, if you can scroll down to the, um, residential uses. So we do have, um, and it's, yeah, that column right there, let's highlight it, uh, so we do have, uh, one to two units would be permitted in, uh, the neighborhood zone. So duplexes would be permitted by right, um, and then two to five unit buildings would be a conditionally permitted use as well. We do have a kind of.
Why, why was it called as conditional for two to five, I mean, quad duplex?
Right.
That is a really nice product, why, what's the conditional piece behind it?
Well, again, you know, we just recognize that that would be, uh, a higher density, um, and that would allow, uh, some additional review both from the township and from neighbors. So we have the, the one and two permitted by right and the, the two to five, I guess really we should, we might want to clarify three to five, uh, instead of.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Two.
Yeah, two, we already got two cut, yeah, yeah, three to five.
But the, the two to five and then six plus would be permitted in the community living, so that would be the, the true multifamily.
Yeah, I, I, um, have the. Didn't that guy come in here about?
Oh, when I was gonna do the development across the high school.
Yeah, was that, was it?
I think they were single-family.
They, those were single-family, right.
Did the other, wasn't it somebody else who came in here about the duplexes or something?
We haven't really had any requests that I recall from duplexes since I.
Okay.
Some of those are in Adams Farm.
What's that?
Some of those are in Adams Farm.
Of duplexes?
Uh, and then accessory dwelling units, uh, we also have as a conditionally.
What is accessory dwelling?
Um, so a modern law suite or a grainy flat, or there's, there's a bunch of different terms for them.
I just kinda think that. Well, it's, I mean, it's conditional use, I guess, I just think whether two to five should be a, you know, prohibited use. I, I kind of, I think if you wanna build a, a duplex and you could go up, build it nice, um, maybe reading all the standards in a quad duplex, you could do it.
I can make that as a note.
Yeah, could, could be, yeah. Can you think of something?
And, and, yes, and some of the local subdivision, so plots are just, you know, what they are, they're plotted out, and that's, uh.
Right.
Yeah, a bigger dwelling or something.
Yeah, I guess it depends on where it's located.
Right.
But we take into consideration the. The neighbors, I say, this is the concern.
Um, we do, and Eric, if you don't mind scrolling back up to the commercial uses, uh, so also still in the neighborhood zone, this is also applicable to community living. Uh, we have, um, we've expanded a little bit the, uh, number of commercial uses that would be conditionally permitted, uh, in residential zones. Um, so things like a, a, a large grocery store would be prohibited, um, but something, if somebody wanted to have a, a, a small grocery or a coffee shop, uh, or something, uh, you know, a very small business, uh, in their home that's more customer-focused, that it would be a conditional use.
One of them.
Okay, so you can break three down and think on that.
Yeah.
Uh, I think that's great to add though, I really do, I mean, you think about some of those older established neighborhoods and.
Right.
You know, Clintville comes to mind, 'cause I lived there a long time, there's grocery stores and along some of those little smaller streets and corners and things, so, yeah. That, that, if that, all that to work, to work very well, and, you know, I, I, it's almost hard to believe that a developer would come in and propose that.
It is, you know, I think it would be more likely a resident.
It evolves, you know, it evolves as time goes on, that's where I think that goes, but I think it's good to continue to add the possibilities for it.
Um, you have the, conditions with the neighborhood, um, all that, like the Airbnb.
Short-term rentals, so those would be conditional uses. So if somebody wanted to have an Airbnb, uh, they would have to get a conditional use permit from the boards or appeals.
That's a good idea.
It's, it's not something that has been an issue here really, but, uh, in other townships and other communities, it is a big issue.
I could think that, that could come up though, that's absolutely possible. Plus you wouldn't have hotels.
Just neighborhood with the housing. It was down in Alton.
And with the, and with the big fields going up there and other farms, and you made enough considerations, which is, you know.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, you, you, the house, neighborhood.
Yeah, the couple, but.
Oh, yes, you're right.
I'm not seeing the, the list.
Alright, so those are the community living, and then the neighborhood would be kind of the, the two main residential.
Yeah, I, I have one question on the, on the, uh, the home-based business story, what are the general guidelines around that from, you know, I know we talked about people can have home-based businesses, maybe selling the insurance company to my clients or whatever, from this time to that time, whatever, but, you know, I thought was things like, and I look, we've done that for other things like signage and, and parking and, you know, what, what's, why haven't we wrapped things around that home-based?
Yeah.
And, and, Robin, has that increased from what it was in the code before?
Uh, essentially, yes.
'Cause I would think it would have to based on what you, because, well, I'll let him go ahead, 'cause in the past had.
Well, you can, you can stop for a minute, 'cause I'm gonna have to find.
There were really considerations for any of that.
Right, right.
You have a home-based business, you didn't have any additional parking, so it was already made sure, you have only a certain amount of square footage in your house that was even allocated for it, and it was going to have to be very small in nature without something you were running on your own, without customers running in and out for parking, now, so it was interested with the backs that expanded. Home-based business was mostly, yeah, it was, it was how much square footage you had, uh, uh, allocating in your home, but no parking, no other, other extra considerations. And, uh, and nobody was gonna come in and check whether you were using that much space or not, right? It was.
Right.
Had to agree to that, but now I'm curious whether that changed.
Home-based business.
So, but were, were any additional signs, I believe, you know, that, that were allowed with that as well, so it was like, yeah, you were being a home-based business, but you were gonna have to be essentially invisible. Maybe, maybe a small sign in the window or something, but there wasn't, there wasn't anything allowed, like you put signs out for?
So we do have specific signage that is, uh, um, there's specific rules for those types of business, businesses with the signage that they're allowed to have, uh, so we do, and we differentiate between, we, so we call them home occupations. Uh, so there's a major home occupation and then minor home occupation, so minor home occupation would be, if they, essentially if they all have foot traffic, uh, and then a major home occupation, they, they would.
So that's allowed for now, a major home occupation?
Correct.
Is parking or anything allowed for that or required?
Um, there, there are some parking requirements, um, but they are not terribly stringent, um, so it's, shall not generate, the language is, uh, they can't generate more in-person traffic, including vehicular parking, than would be normally expected in residential neighborhood.
Okay. It's actually they have to be invisible, they're invisible.
Yeah, maybe not quite invisible, but, yeah, not a, not a nuisance.
Right, not a nuisance, right, right.
Um, we do have, uh, specific, um, I won't go greatly into detail into these, but again, we do have specific zones for both Evans Farm and Lewis Center Village, um, you know, and I, you know, we have not.
You understand the point you made last time.
Yeah, absolutely, and then.
With respect, yeah.
Right, yeah, no, I, I think that, that makes a lot of sense, we have not kind of gone down that path of how we want to tackle that, uh, issue yet, uh, but we will when we start our legal review.
Yeah.
'Cause I, I think that's a very valid concern, uh, but, you know, we tried to, um, design those zones in mind for those specific locations.
Yeah, i- is there a way legally you can say, hey, this was grandfathered in and leave it there and not make a zone out of it? Or do you have to make a zone out of it because it exists?
Well, we don't have to, uh, there, and like the Lewis Center Village, a lot of it is legally non-conforming.
Right.
But still, whenever somebody wants to build something new, if they wanna build a new house or a new garage, then they have to come into Louisiana and get a million variances.
Right.
So we're, we're trying to prevent that.
Difficult.
Agreed.
Robin, what's a flex employment zone?
So flex employment, um, was kind of the last one I wanted to cover this evening, um, so that's the industrial zone essentially, so it, it covers almost all commercial and industrial uses that would be permitted.
Alright.
And Eric, do you mind clicking back to the map, please?
Back to the map.
So the, uh, flex employment is the purple, um, there, so it's, it's mostly, I guess it's all land that's currently so planned industrial, uh, so it's kind of that behind twenty-three.
Yeah.
What is the flex one?
Flex employment.
In the definition here?
Well, it's, it doesn't really have a definition, it's just what we're, what we're calling this. So heavy, I mean, heavy industry would be not permitted, but, uh, light industry, uh, advanced manufacturing, uh, then this would be the, essentially in terms of uses, the zone that has the least restrictions.
Yeah.
It's not quite anything goes, but, uh, there are a lot of permitted uses. 'Cause in, in general, those are areas that are already farther away from residences.
What's the green place?
So the green is parks and open space, um, so we do have, uh, a zone that's specifically dedicated for parks, which we don't in our current code, most parkland is currently zoned far residential, um. In general, there's not a lot of permitted uses for that because it's designed to remain open space.
Residential spaces become more limited, huh?
It, I mean, part of it, it just, with our current zoning map, a lot of the, um, it just looks different, because a lot of the, um, again, a lot of large properties that are currently zoned far residential are changing to either the parks and open space or the campus institutional.
Yeah.
Uh, so it, it just looks a little different on this map. And then, uh, I guess the last, the, so there's two other zones that we haven't really talked about, and I don't know that we need to get into detail. So there's the, um, the mixed-use, uh, zone, um, which is fairly self-explanatory in terms of uses. I mean, it, it has, kind of, the, the light commercial as permitted. We don't really have it many zones on this map that are designated mixed-use, because we don't really have any currently, but there's only one degree zone of mixed-use they could. And then rural residential is the last zone. Um, so it's kind of the one that's like very light, um, like tan, I guess. Uh, so that's kind of the, the last remaining large lot residential that's, that has a more rural feel. Um, and has, you know, fairly similar uses, uh, to the neighborhood zone. It's designed for large lots, single-family.
Purple is mixed-use?
Uh, purple is the industrial flex one.
So, Robin, can I just ask, like, this area right here?
Yeah.
For like the Green Meadows area?
Yeah.
Like, those have a lot of like, what I would call office-style mixed-in?
Yep.
But that's still industrial, it's not mixed.
Correct, yeah, it's actually, it's currently zoned planned industrial. Um, but it's, the way we have it set up, um, is that a lot of the, the, those commercial uses are also permitted in the industrial zone.
Got it. What would mixed u- if you switched it to mixed-use, what would it encourage that you don't already get it?
Well, residences primarily, um, but other than that, it would be, I mean, if, if it were rezoned to mixed-use, it would take away some of the more industrial uses, uh, but would still keep some of the, you know, lower impact, more neighborhood commercial.
Got it.
Which would probably be permitted there currently anyway.
Thank you.
Mixed-use seems like it's always kind of shown up rather than as been zoned.
Right, yeah.
Somebody shows up and says, "Here's what I wanna do, wanna build this, these apartments with this commercial," like, you know, but we just, we just, you know, we never, and we say, "Okay, this goes here or doesn't."
Yeah, and I.
Because we have a flexibility with respect to that.
Right, and, you know, to your point earlier, uh, you know, mixed-use neighborhoods, you know, we think a lot of, a lot of kind of older cities is having those kind of natural mixed-use that were done a hundred and fifty years ago.
Yeah.
When Orange Township was largely developed, then the last fifty years, that just was not the predominant style of development.
Right, right, right.
And now we're seeing that come back around.
Yeah.
So that's really, that wraps up most of what I want to tackle tonight from a use standpoint.
Thank you very much, Robin, thank you for the work.
Well, thank you all for bearing with me. Um, I do wanna mention, so we will have kind of a, we're gonna have a kind of a public open house or presentation, uh, for this zoning code on March thirteenth, uh, here at five-thirty. Uh, you all are welcome to attend, I don't think you're going to learn anything more than what you have already. Uh, but we'll also look to schedule, uh, another session with you all in March, um, to, to delve further into some of the, the more specifics. Partially due to the development standards, but also just different things that are changing that we wanna highlight with you all.
Ah, you've done some good work and stuff, oh, you had, yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you all for your feedback, this has, this has been useful.
Yeah, and, um, see if we can have one of those working sessions, like session on that.
Yeah, can do.
Okay.
Thank you.
So.
Is, is Orange Township, uh, it's pretty much locked and has not, doesn't have the ability to annex anything else?
Right, yeah, unfortunately not. Townships can only lose land in Ohio. Cities can gain land, but we cannot.
That's how it is.
Is there such a thing as townships merging with another township? I'll make that sound.
Not that I've ever heard. I search such.
Or is township always limited with the, by the number of people, what's that?
I've never heard. Uh, he asked if there was, uh, any examples of a township incorporated.
Yeah.
It, it is impos- it is possible for, uh, areas to incorporate, but I don't think a, a township can just become a city. A city wouldn't just be created in Orange Township as we know it, go away. So I, I don't see that happening.
Why is that?
Well, um, it's hard, it's hard to imagine people voting themselves out of existence.
Right.
Yeah, 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 that's part of the. So it's village here, right, and then township, then corporation, that's the way?
Uh, no, so, um, cities and villages are municipalities, those are incorporated areas.
Okay.
Uh, it's a village until it has five thousand residents, and then it becomes a city at five thousand. Uh, and then townships are unincorporated within a county.
So if, uh, if Westerville or Columbus said they wanted to quote-unquote annex Orange, is that something they could do?
They, they can, uh, and they have, and they may well again, so they.
Polaris Mall is Orange Township.
Yeah, so they.
Polaris Mall is Orange Township, but it's already annexed.
They, they do it per parcel, though. They don't just say, "Okay, we're going to annex all of the township." They do it, they do it with agreements with individual property owners.
Aren't there agreements with Westerville that the lines were drawn here? I think, that's why I heard at one time.
I don't, we do not have a no, we do not have any no annexation agreements. In reality, uh, those cities are not annexing very much, uh, at least in this area. So it, it has not become a concern.
What drives them annexing tax base?
Money.
So, yeah, so the, the cities want the taxes, and then a lot of the, um, a lot of the attraction from a property owner's standpoint is that the cities can offer, uh, services, primarily utilities.
Yeah, yeah.
But, I mean, a lot of the reason why this is not annexed is because we, you know, Delaware County has a really good utility system, and so there's been no need for properties to annex in.
I know a lot of the folks who live up on Cheshire area, Glen Ross, above Delaware, they hate to be called Delaware. They say, "Our kids go to Ole Miss schools, they're at Berlin, they're at this," you know? And they've been trying to get their fight out to not be, they'd rather just be part of Lewis Center, or part of the mouth, but not Delaware.
So the annexing educational, the annexing of like Polaris Mall at some point, did you put up a fight?
Um, I was not around.
I was, I was here, but.
The truth is, it's almost nothing you can do.
You can't.
Really?
You don't really have any power over that. It's not just, you just, you just, you can't fight that, that kind of entity. If they decide, they decided they wanted that territory, and they did a great job. They came in, built all the roads, and all the, all the buildings. I mean, and, and they.
I was living in Delaware.
And, and they moved very quickly once, once they, once that was completed. Those are what they fight for.
Could you at least ask them, can you share a little bit of tax base with us?
We would love that.
Give it half a percent or something, okay.
And so, we are looking at different economic development tools that kind of discourage annexation.
Yeah.
But that kind of thinking was not around twenty, thirty years ago.
Yeah, exactly, consider what happens.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But, yes, Dennis is right, when a, when a city decides to annex a parcel, a township essentially has no say.
Can I ask a really complicated question on that?
Sure.
I'm sorry, man. So like, we, we can't collect school revenue on the Polaris area, because we are not an incorporated city in that city of Columbus, right? So like.
But school districts are different than townships.
Right, but, but because Ole Miss County School District looks like essentially this, like, that we can't get any money in from commercial businesses, right? And so like, I guess my question is, is like, what, what mechanisms can we use to say, hey, like, we are, we are the tax base that feeds this Polaris area? Like, why are we not able to utilize a good mix of commercial in order to fund our schools? So that like, the residents are left with such a high burden?
We'll have to ask the city of Columbus then.
Oh, yeah, the residents are left with an extremely high burden.
Yeah.
Extremely high. It, it gets to be almost impossible, near impossible to live here if you're a senior or a fixed income. Uh, and your house would be paid off. You might be paid off, your car is gonna be paid.
Taxes would be going private, maybe.
Exactly.
Absolutely crazy.
Your, your, your taxes are, are going, you're gonna form another question.
Keep saying, "Yeah, let's raise it." I think, uh, I think the, uh, board of trustees should go to City Columbus and say, "Give us a quarter percent or eight percent."
I would love for that to happen.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, it would happen.
One, one other quick question, you know, we did talk about, or we did say, I thought on the quarter, is there some kind of tax now that's gonna be able to be collected for any new business or something?
Yeah, so the, that's the JED, Joint Economic Development District. And that is something where, um, JEDs can prevent annexation.
Yeah.
Uh, because it can be written into an agreement with the property, uh, that they will never annex.
And will that give, will that give the community relief?
That's the plan. I mean, it, it has to, you know, generate so much revenue before you can actually start doing pro- projects, but.
I, I, I think there ought to be a, a, if I was on the board, given the fact that Columbus expected to grow like crazy, given the fact that it's, he's won out all of this, you know, people are clamoring, and I'd go to City Columbus and say, "Hey, along that Polaris border, can you give me eight to a percent?"
What power do you have?
No, it's just, it's just going to be, it's just going to be, but. But it, it may be just being able to put the question forward. I mean, maybe you put some, hey, here's some bullet points, but maybe put some question forward to at least to say, "Okay, yeah, the people up here at Orange Township, they..." Now, Columbus may say, "We don't wanna start a trend, and we don't want the rest of the cities coming to take a little and get something," but I don't know.
Well, the other thing, you got, I mean, the council trustees don't have any power, they don't control any taxes.
I know, yeah.
They don't collect any taxes, they have nothing to do with taxes. They, and they have zip, so, so, so they're not gonna get involved with it.
I would ask the question, I'm not asking to go there and demand. I just say, are we, are we officially done?
We can be.
Okay, let's, let's, okay, um.
You got anything else you wanna add to the?
Not really, um, yeah.
Thank you very much, thanks for the.